...said if it were airborne, would jeopardize the respiratory health of people who live in and around the neighborhood in which the dust was found.
Los Angeles City Councilmember Paul Krikorian recently joined dozens of Cub Scouts, veterans, and neighborhood leaders in a tree planting project at North Hollywood Park. One hundred new trees were planted in the community park, which recently lost a number of trees due to drought and disease. Officials say these new drought-tolerant trees will provide shade and create a more pleasant, useful, and sustainable green space for the community.
This really was an effort of neighbors, and young people, and veterans, and environmentalists, and others who really cared about improving the quality of life in North Hollywood and the environment.
For students in the 21st century, computer science is key to success in college and career. Rich Samuels looks at one school where computer science is front and center.
From across the city, from UCLA and from the Los Angeles Unified School District, educators and community leaders came to Foché Tech Academy to check out the innovative work of some talented seniors.
This is the third year of seniors for the Foché Tech Academy. They've been together for three years, and this is their showcase of all of their computer science work over the past three years. As their final project, they each took on an issue in the community and used technology to provide either awareness or a solution to the issue.
It's all part of the Hour of Code campaign, a worldwide effort to expand access to computer science and increasing participation by women and underrepresented students of color.
I learned different programming languages. I learned new life skills about marketing and about communication, and I've learned that it can be applied in everything that you do. So now I plan on attending college and majoring in computer science.
The students tackle real-world problems from entirely new perspectives.
For example, one of the issues we have here on campus is social responsibility. So one of the groups created Foché Rewards, and they're trying to gamify school to get people to help each other and look out for each other, so hopefully it becomes a normal course of action.
But with engaged teachers and industry mentors, students are discovering the skills they've learned aren't just for their future.
You can make a difference right now. As a matter of fact, we need you to make a difference right now. As a matter of fact, we need you to lead right now.
From Foché Tech Academy in South Los Angeles, this is Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
The Hour of Code event has introduced more than 100 million students worldwide to computer science. While you never get table service like this, Greater L.A.'s African-American Chamber of Commerce kicked off its inaugural celebrity waiter and waitress luncheon. Stars from every walk of life donated their services for a good cause. Anna Marcos has the story.
These aren't just run-of-the-mill waiters and waitresses. There are some big VIPs here, all taking part in the first-ever celebrity waiter and waitress luncheon. The fundraiser is put on by the Greater L.A. African-American Chamber of Commerce Education Fund and Foundation, or GLAC. Waiter and councilmember Corin Price gets a welcome that would be the envy of any Hollywood A-list star.
This is an opportunity to support GLAC and its education fund. We're supporting young people, encouraging their educational pursuits.
The celebrity waitstaffers run the gamut, from Microsoft and Tinseltown executives to government leaders, lawyers, and doctors. There is even an L.A. police commissioner in the bunch. And guess what? You have to tip.
My mama taught us that if you can't afford to tip, you can't afford to eat.
And not just one tip either. After all, how many waiters do you know will pose for pictures, dance for customers, make small talk, and yes, even do real waitstaff work, like serving and pouring? How about a plate and a hug? Now that's TLC. And the more tips you can collect for each job, the better, because the cash doesn't go into these waiters' pockets, it goes into the pot to fund college educations for young African-American high school graduates.
There's a red jar, a red box, on your table. You don't have to hand your waiters any money or anything. You drop it right there in that box.
I might have to go back to my day job, yes, but I'm learning on the job.
Well, a little extra job experience can't hurt the resume. And with the money raised, you just might help a young person get started on a career. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
GLAC provides economic opportunities for underserved communities, and it has already raised close to a half a million dollars for inner-city students' education. While the L.A. Zoo welcomes its newest residents, a pair of Tasmanian devils who are there for show as well as conservation. Gil Reyes explains.
That is right, Yana. The arrival of these two Tasmanian devils, brothers, by the way, is part of a larger effort to save the animals from extinction. Tasmanian devils, on the whole, suffering from a rare type of facial cancer.
They arrive at the L.A. Zoo with the nastiest of reputations, but the truth about Tasmanian devils is that their bark, or rather, their growl is worse than their bite.
Contrary to belief, they are not the vicious creatures that people think they are.
You might have been expecting this: the snarling tough guy from Looney Tunes destroying everything in his path like a tornado. But Robin Parker, senior zoo animal keeper, says real Tasmanian devils are usually quite timid until provoked.
They can spin, but not quite like the cartoon character.
And why do they spin? What's that?
It's normally an aggressive behavior.
Though only the size of a small dog, Tasmanian devils are the largest marsupial carnivores in the world. They attack in groups, eat animals whole, and have terrifying, bone-chilling shrieks to go with those sharp teeth. The two brothers come to us from a wildlife sanctuary in Tasmania, Australia.
We hope people enjoy it. They are threatened and endangered in Australia, and we hope to be part of the solutions going forward in the future.
L.A. Zoo Director John Lewis says more than half of the population has been wiped out in recent years, mainly because of devil facial tumor disease, a parasitic cancer. The brothers, around three years old, are cancer-free. The long-term goal is to find the mates so they can help produce colonies of healthy offspring.
They don't eat humans whole, do they?
I hope not.
Rodents, chunk meat, and rabbits mostly. At the L.A. Zoo, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The L.A. Zoo is one of only four zoos in the nation that have taken in the creatures. While 13th District Councilman Mitchell Farrell celebrated two years in office with a recommitment to community empowerment, Rich Samuels has more.
It seemed like everyone turned out for Councilman Mitchell Farrell's Family Resource Fair, held recently on the campus of Rosemont Elementary School. The fair wasn't just informative and empowering...
We're having fun.
We have about 18 agencies and nonprofits partnering with us today, and we're offering dental screenings, medical screenings, we're offering immigration services, as well as pony rides for the kids, hot dogs, free food, bounce houses for the kids, but also city services.
Those city services range from sanitation in the public library to homeless services, the LAPD, and the fire department.
We like being in the neighborhood and letting constituents know that we are here for them, and that there are a lot of agencies and nonprofits that exist to serve the public.
This is Rich Samuels for LA This Week.
Councilman O'Farrell has made outreach a top priority, leading close to two dozen community walks throughout his district since he took office. While aspiring drummers go head-to-head, celebrating African-American films and hiding your identity takes on a whole new look. All this in this week's Things to Do. The search for the top undiscovered drummer heats up during the Guitar Center's Drum-Off Finals. After making it through the preliminary rounds, the top five undiscovered drummers will hit the stage at Club Nokia to compete for the Drum-Off title. The Drum-Off competition was developed to inspire and support drummers in the pursuit of their musical aspirations. Drum-Off is committed to rewarding and recognizing talent by providing a launching pad for a professional career as a drummer. To compete, you need to sign up at a participating Guitar Center store. For more, visit drumoff.guitarcenter.com. The California African-American Museum celebrates African-American cinematic moments from the 1940s through an independent lens. Coloring Independently is an exhibition of more than 80 film stills and related photographs from the unique collection surrounding African-American films from the 1940s. The show features images of African-Americans in movies during a time of limited character roles and access to the mainstream movie industry. Seen typically in movies referred to as race films or movies, these independent productions were created with a black cast and for an African-American audience. Explore the distinct images and stories told more than 65 years ago as part of the broader African-American filmmaking tradition. The exhibit is on view now through February 29th. The African-American Museum is located at 600 State Drive in Exposition Park. For more, visit caamuseum.org. It's a dynamic exhibition that considers the past, present, and future of disguise, a visual act that can be a mask, a costume, or simply a camouflage. Disguise features exciting new works by 12 contemporary artists from Africa and of African descent who explore the impulse of disguise with optical illusions, street actions, computer magic, and virtual reality. Together, these works will engage visitors' imaginations as they consider the art of masking as a transformative process, one that is informed by a multiplicity of influences, from historical African masquerade traditions to contemporary global culture and digital media. It's on view now until March 13th at UCLA's Fowler Museum. For more, visit fowler.ucla.edu. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kay, and from all of us here at LA This Week, thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Hi, I'm Kevin from Chatsworth, offering you a taste of New Orleans since 1986. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
... items called special or general public comment.
Okay, we're going to quickly move to item five. Mr. Walsh, item five. Number five is the issue under... this is again REAP, Rent Escrow Account Program. Make sure that these are people, landlords, who did not bring their units up to code, and the renter brought it to the attention of the city, and landlord continued to do nothing. Now, the landlord doesn't get his rent, the rent goes to the city. This, again, is an excellent program. Whenever you do a good job, I'm the first to praise you, and when you do a shit job, I'm the first to say you're a bunch of shit. Great vocabulary, Mr. Walsh. Members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
All right. We're going to quickly... Mr. Walsh, don't leave. I'm sure you're... We're going to move to item six, so if I can get you, Mr. Walsh, and Mr. Previn on item six.
I hope I got it fast enough.
Stay on the subject.
Number six, vaca... Okay, what is this vacating the pass road? What does that mean? You're not interested in talking about this. This is what this means. You're never going to find the L.A. Times doing this story. It means that they want to give a piece of land to a big developer. If I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong. So they vacate the land to help the developer to destroy your neighborhood. The vacations happen most... Vacating happens mostly in minority areas because the people... My people, the Jews, are much smarter. They buy you off.
Stay on the subject.
Hollywoodhighlands.org or tweeting at Hollywood Dems.
Mr. Previn.
Good morning, Council President. Wesen, it is Eric Previn, and this is item six. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's CD seven, and we're talking about, as Mr. Walsh identified, it's a vacation of some property for... presumably, Mr. Fuentes is facilitated, and that is helpful. So we'd like to say thank you for that, sir. And I know you're not going to like this, but I just wanted to ask, sir, because I missed the ad hoc committee meeting on the Olympics...
Mr. Previn, it's not going to happen. You've got to stay on the subject, and I'm sorry you missed the meeting. It was a good one. Go ahead.
Well, that's what I was looking forward to, was a little report. Maybe, hopefully, when we get to that item, you guys will give...
You're off the subject, Mr. Previn. Thank you. We'll have other meetings. All right, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Price, are you ready? With a very... It's my understanding we have a very special presentation today. The floor is yours.
It means that they want to give a piece of land to a big developer. If I'm wrong, tell me I'm wrong. So they vacate the land to help the developer to destroy your neighborhood. The vacations happen most, vacating happens mostly in minority areas because the people, my people, the Jews are much smarter, they buy you off.
Stay on the subject.
Hollywood Highlands dot org, or tweeting at Hollywood Dems.
Mr. Previn.
Good morning, Council President. Wesson, it is Eric Previn. And this is Item 6. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's CD 7, and we're talking about, as Mr. Walsh identified, it's a vacation of some property for, which presumably Mr. Fuentes has facilitated, and that is helpful. So we'd like to say thank you for that, sir. And I know you're not gonna like this, but I just wanted to ask, sir, because I missed the ad hoc committee meeting on the Olympics.
Mr. Previn, Mr. Previn, it's not gonna happen. You gotta stay on the subject. And I'm sorry you missed the meeting, it was a good one. Go ahead.
Well, that's what I was looking forward to, was a little report, maybe, hopefully, when we get to that item, you guys will give a-
You're off the subject, Mr. Previn. Thank you. We'll have other meetings. All right, members, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Mr. Price, are you ready? With a very, it's my understanding, we have a very special presentation today. The floor is yours.
My colleague, Councilman Marquise Harris Dawson, is joining me in this very special presentation this morning. On this day in 1929, a man who would reshape the nation was born. A man whose melodic voice still resonates with us all. It was a voice that knew the power of organization and collective action. He mobilized tens of thousands of citizens to march, sit in, and demonstrate for equal rights. The Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. helped pave the way for many of us in this chamber today. And the Southern Christian Leadership Conference has carried on his legacy since his death in 1968. Joining us today is the Southern Christian Leadership Conference of Southern California. On Monday, they will be holding their annual Legacy Awards Benefit Gala in memory of Amelia Boynton Robinson, the Honorable Julian Bond from Atlanta, and the Honorable Louis Stokes of St. Louis. Before we hear from Pastor Smart, the president and CEO of the SCLC, I'm gonna ask my colleague from the 8th District, Councilman Marquise Harris Dawson, to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Price, and members, for joining us in the celebration of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference, one of the most important organizations in the civil rights movement. And I'm proud to stand here and point out that the Los Angeles chapter of SCLC is one of the most dynamic and most vibrant chapters of SCLC that exists anywhere in the country over the last 40 years. They've led many of the key fights here in Los Angeles, whether it was desegregating schools. In both of our districts, the, we have a big boulevard called Martin Luther King Boulevard, and SCLC let out in that key name change. Our society depends on activists coming on, taking on tough issues, and standing together to fight to create the kind of society we all deserve. And SCLC is always at the front of that fight, so we're proud to join in the celebration today of the organization and their honorees.
Thank you, Councilman. And you're right, this, this chapter's been one of the more aggressive, positive, forward-thinking chapters in the country, and so we're very honored to welcome today Pastor William D. Smart Jr., who's the president and CEO of the Southern Christian Leadership Conference of Southern California. Pastor Smart?
Before Pastor Smart begins, I'd like to ask a favor of my colleagues and the individuals that are with us today in the assembly chambers. This organization has played such a critical role in the history, not only of African-Americans, but the history of this country. Could we please give them the round of applause that they deserve? Please? Thank you all. Pastor Smart, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and to the distinguished city council persons, and to Councilman Price and Councilman Harris Dawson, thank you for this day. This is an important time. Let me give a shout out to my Councilman Mike Bonin. This is a crucial time for us in the struggle. There are programs we're instituting around education, economic development, and workforce policies that are crucial as we provide and continue the dream of Dr. Martin Luther King. We're so happy that, to be honored, but we recognize that the work still must be done, even voting rights. Some of you worked with us during the 50th Celebration of the Voting Rights Amendment this past summer. These are crucial times, especially, we're gonna be doing a whole year of voting, voter registration and engagement, because elections are still importing, and those are our important rights. We're so honored to have the four people here, Representative One and the other three are here that we're honoring. We hope that many of you, who are our friends, can come to the gala on Monday, and we want to thank you for just being there for us, and the struggle continues, and we're gonna be there in the spirit of Dr. Martin Luther King. Thank you, Councilman Price.
Thank you. Mr. Price, before you go on, there are a couple of members that want to say a few words, so how do you want to handle it?
Well, let's introduce our honorees.
Then you go right ahead.
And then if there's some comments, we certainly welcome them. But as we mentioned, on Monday, the SCLC is gonna be honoring four outstanding individuals for their leadership and for their commitment to the values of Dr. Martin Luther King. And we have Cheryl Boone Isaacs. Ms. Isaacs made history when she became the first African-American president of the Academy of Motion Pictures, Arts, and Sciences. She will receive the Rosa Parks Humanitarian.
Give her a round of applause. Good to see you again.
I know, nice to see you too, sir. And it's been, it's a great pleasure to be here this morning and to speak to all of you about the importance of the work that Martin Luther King certainly started many, many years ago when I was a youngster. And as the work continues to this day, and the success that the SCLC has accomplished throughout these years, and continues to fight the fight, as the Reverend has just said, I am most humbled and honored that I will be receiving the Rosa Parks Humanitarian Award on Monday. Thank you so much.
And congratulations to you.
We also have Sharice Brimmon Weaver, no stranger to these chambers, the president and CEO of the Brotherhood Crusade. She's receiving the Chairman's Award. This award is presented for leadership and perseverance in applying the nonviolent philosophy of Dr. King towards the achievement of human relations and civil rights goals. Sharice Brimmon Weaver.
And I don't think she's a stranger anywhere, Mr. Price. Not here, of course. Good to see you.
I'm truly honored. This is a great day for the Los Angeles Brotherhood Crusade. When you think of Dr. King and SCLC, the Brotherhood Crusade was created out of that model, helping people to help themselves. And so when I think of the great legacy, I think of my own late father, Walter Brimmon, who founded Brotherhood Crusade in 1968. I think of our board chairman, Danny Bakewell, who really led the fight for 35 years. And as I celebrate this Chairman's Award, I think of Alice Goff and Reverend Smart, who is laying the foundation for SCLC in Los Angeles, so thank you.
Thank you.
Another person, no stranger to our community or to these chambers, Ken Maxey, the Comcast Director of External Affairs here in California. He's gonna receive the Emerging Leader Award, which is given to a rising leader with a commitment to the community, and displays the characteristics that Dr. King demonstrated. Ken Maxey.
All right.
Good morning, President Wesson.
Good to see you too.
Councilman Price, Harrison Dawson, and distinguished council members. My name is Ken Maxey. I stand before you today as a son of two retired public school educators, humbled by this recognition. My parents are right here.
Now, let's give your parents a round of applause. You did a good job, parents, you did a good job.
Like so many in my generation, I remain committed to the dream of Dr. King, and stand on the shoulders of those that risk their lives for equality and justice. Because of, because of my commitment, I'm concerned. I'm concerned that some days, our nation, and in parts of our city, country, state, the color of one's skin, sexual orientation, age, gender, faith, immigration status, or origin dictates their economic future. I say no to this notion, but say yes to equipping each and every Angelino and person in this nation with the tools they need to succeed. Technology and innovation do not just belong to the Silicon Valley. The youth today and the next generation want to dream big. Therefore, we are a society that must make sure that everyone can be great because everyone can serve. Thank you again for this recognition, and thank you, Mom and Dad, for being supportive through all these years, and thank God almighty, because we all, as Angelinos and Californians, lead the way in so many ways. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, we have Devon Franklin, bestselling author and president, president and CEO of Sony Studios. He's gonna receive the Thomas Kilgore Jr. Award, the Prophetic Witness Award. This award is presented to an individual or organization who, like Dr. Kilgore, effectively promotes and embodies the ideals of Dr. King in both the secular and the sacred communities. And so we appreciate, and we'll be recognizing Mr. Franklin as well.
His aunt, his aunt's here.
Oh, representing him, we have his aunt, and we invite her to come forward.
Welcome.
Thank you so much. It's an honor to be here. I don't have a prepared speech, but I am so thankful and humbled to be able to accept this award on behalf of Devon Franklin. If he were here, he would say that it is his privilege to be able to make a difference in the lives of people, not only in this city, but around the world, especially youth, in showing and making change in our communities, and being able to have peace and love and justice prevail in each one of their lives. And so it is my honor once again to say thank you for allowing him to have such a prestigious award as the Dr. Kilgare Award. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. We will be going to the back with some pictures, but it'd be certainly welcome any comments any colleagues may have.
And a few comments you do have. I want to just say to each and every one of you, if you look around this horseshoe, you will see that we are about as diverse as it could be. And a lot of that is because of the work that started back when this organization was founded, so you should take a partial responsibility. With that said, I would like to defer to Mr. David Rue.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise today in honor and in awe of the Los Angeles chapter of SCLC. And I also want to, again, congratulate the honorees this year, Ms. Cheryl Isaacs, Pastor Devon Franklin, Ms. Sharice Weaver, and last but not least, my buddy, my friend, Ken Maxey, who's joined by his parents today. It's congratulations, and you know, I just want to say a quick thing about my friend Ken, who I've known for a long time, since our first, first time we met at Supervisor Yvonne Burke's office, then later, working together in advocacy as young Democrats, then many times again throughout our lives. I'm proud of what you've accomplished and what you will accomplish, and good job. Thank you, guys.
All right, give him a round of applause. Well said, Mr. Rue. Mr. Mike Bonin.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Price and Mr. Harris Dawson, for doing this presentation this morning. I want to congratulate those who have received the recognition and the honor today, but I wanted to say a few words to particularly thank this chapter of SCLC. My constituent, Mr. Smart, thank you for your leadership. When you spoke, you wanted, you said, "Thank you to us for being there for you and with you," but I actually think it's the opposite. I want to give a personal thank you to this chapter, for where this chapter has been in the fight for my civil rights. I know it was a very difficult position a few years ago for this chapter, when it was fighting for equal rights for the LGBT community and for marriage. And the leadership that this chapter here in Los Angeles provided was significant, at a very crucial turning point in the battle for LGBT civil rights and in the battle for marriage, and it is not something that I will ever forget. I am incredibly indebted to the L.A. chapter of SCLC for that. I also can't help but acknowledge that there's a number of faces I see standing behind Mr. Price and Mr. Harris Dawson, who showed up at various hearings and testified on behalf of raising the minimum wage here in Los Angeles. This chapter has been an outspoken organization advocating for social and economic justice for all Angelinos. And the battle for economic justice for all of us, the battle for civil rights, the battle for voting rights, is gonna take a huge coalition. It's gonna take black, and brown, and white, and gay, and straight. And the fact that SCLC Los Angeles has been at the forefront of building that coalition is incredibly important. And I, for one, want to make sure that the rest of us reciprocate the leadership that SCLC has shown for Los Angeles and for my community, and make sure that we're there for all the struggles and all the fights that you just outlined. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sadio.
Good morning. Praise to all the nominees. Much deserved and well overdue, even for Mr. Maxey, as your youthful leadership has been evident for over a decade at least. Martin Luther King said, "The measure of a man is not where he stands at times of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of conflict and controversy." And this chapter, as has been stated, has stood tall and stood strong at those times of conflict and controversy. This is one of the greatest moments in our nation where the leadership of SCLC is so needed. Every day, people who have the audacity to run for the leadership of our country spew hatred, xenophobia, racism, sexism. Their discrimination against the disabled is displayed outwardly and boldly, and this is the time the leadership of SCLC is needed most. I thank you on behalf of the undocumented community for being there when we marched against Proposition 187, and it was bold to stand out there at that time, but it was the right thing to do, and it was the measure of your organization. And so I thank you for your leadership, because we are all under attack today. Not just Muslims, not just disabled, not just the undocumented, but all of us. The very nature of our nation is under attack by those who have the audacity to try to run for the presidency of this nation. And so we must speak out, as did Martin Luther King, every single day for peace and for unity. And for that, I thank you, and I look forward to seeing you on Monday night. Amen.
All right, let's give him one more round of applause.
The special role that this chapter of SCLC has played, not just in our community, but really nationally, and so we invite you to come out and celebrate this weekend. A whole range of activities celebrating Martin Luther King and his legacy. The dinner, of course, on Monday night. Monday, during the day Monday, there's a parade that yours truly will be the grand marshal of for the first time. We're gonna, we're gonna feature a unity float for Districts 8, 9, and 10 riding together, sort of, again, demonstrating-
The very first time in the history of this parade.
First time that has occurred. And so we are just excited to be here, excited to honor SCLC, excited to honor the honorees, and congratulate them all for their continued work and commitment to our community. Councilman, last words.
And you know what, Mr. Price, you know what we should do? We should get some T-shirts. And Mr. Harris Dawson's T-shirt will say, "Unity." Mine will say, "In the," and yours will say, "Community."
It sounds like a plan.
I just want to acknowledge our Chairman of the Board, Ms. Alice Goff.
All right, Alice.
Good morning. A little different role for me today. Usually, I'm here haranguing you on the worker issues, but this morning, I'm just proud and honored to stand with my colleagues and all the recipients of the awards, the various awards from our chapter, because these are folks who have truly proven themselves in the community, and we look forward to seeing you on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. All righty.
Thank you, members. Happy King Day.
And as they're moving to the back, Madam Clerk, why don't we go into the special meeting? So why don't we recess this meeting and quickly move into the special meeting?
Blumenfeld, Bonin, Buscaino, Sadio, Englander, Fuentes, Harris Dawson, Weiser, Carretts, Krikorian, Martinez, O'Farrell, Price, Rue, Wesson. 14 members present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, now, what is the item that is before us?
Item 7 is an item for which public hearings have been held.
Okay, on Item 7, can we open the roll? Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, why don't we, and we'll send this forth with, thank you, Mr. City Attorney, but why don't we adjourn the special meeting and return to the regular meeting? Okay, let's quickly move to item two. Mr. Previn and Mr. Walsh, and then we'll go to Mr. Rue for a presentation. So if I could get Mr. Previn.
I'm out of breath from running. Number two, okay, this again is a alcohol sales off-site consumption, sprouts, farmers' market. We don't have enough places to buy alcohol here. We have to increase our lead as the drunk-driving capital of the world, and that is what we are. And I'm sure they really, it's a necessity. Alcohol is a necessity or a convenience. Look, you scumbags, the blood of every person who's been run over, all 15 of you scumbags will vote for this, and it's in Mr. Rue's district. It'll be, what is it going to be? A Korean shop? He's not sitting here. He's back there on his knees in front of the alcohol dispenser. I'm telling you right now, alcohol application for determination of public convenience. I challenge you to find what? Ninety-five percent of people, drunk drivers, are alcoholics. They're on drugs when they do it, but we need more convenience. Ms. Martinez doesn't give a shit about this. You don't give a...
Do not address the, stick to the item. Mr. Walsh, you know the rules. Stick to the item.
The item is a liquor license, alcohol license, for off-site consumption. So I just want everyone to know in that neighborhood, if you go to Koreatown, get drunk and run over a Korean, because in the end, it'll be dead yellow blood, not dead white blood. Go fuck yourself.
Okay, again, thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. You are out of time. Disrupting this meeting, you're still disrupting this meeting, Mr. Walsh. Have a seat. Have a seat, Mr. Walsh. You're disrupting the meeting until you sit down.
It's okay. Okay. Greetings. It is Eric Previn from CD2. Thank you. This is CD5, obviously, Mr. Coretts's stately district, and it's La Brea, which everybody enjoys. It's a nice corridor. There's a lot of things going on. So, you know, I think adding liquor here is probably six one half dozen of the other. I'm sure they're taking care of it. They got a representative on this, Dick Erhoff, who is doing a great job. He has set this up, people have arranged it, and now it's going to happen, so I would like to thank him. I'd also like to thank Mr. Sadio and Hilda Solis over at the county for aggressively embracing the 7-Eleven corporation, where unfortunately, that's meant to be a no thanks, because I'm anxious about these places advertising that they're going to put veggies and fruit in the window, but it's actually just an opportunity to bring in some good sales on the good stuff, on the hard stuff. Not the hard stuff in terms of, you know, like vodka or a whiskey drink, something that I would perhaps enjoy, but more of a beer, wine, coolers, all kinds of flavorful ways to get lit and do bad things or whatever. But, look, guys, if we could focus the energy that this team has been bringing toward adding liquor licenses, towards adding the fresh food, it's basically that you take the section of all these that is in the community benefit, which is bullshit, and let's amplify it to make it more of what's happening. And then, I think, you know, you may see a reduction in some of the drunk driving, and I'm just going to, because you've put this on the agenda, I just want to say that the checkpoint Charlie spend-a-lot-on-law-enforcement approach isn't a good area. A better area is empowering communities to not let people get in the car when they're inebriated. People, regular people. And I don't mean empowering them, sir, with a taser and a badge that says "I'm a cop" or a reserve cop. I mean, because people know that there are guidelines and rules, and Mr. Fuhr is able to adjust his campaign energy toward those kinds of informational updates, I think that would really be helpful. And then we don't have to put public necessity for people to get booze. Thanks.
All right. Seeing no other speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll on that item. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
Great, thank you very much. And now we have another special presentation by Councilmembers Rue and Coretts. The floor is yours.
Good morning, colleagues, and thank you, Mr. President. Today, we welcome Run to Remember to Los Angeles for their inaugural race. Run to Remember began in Boston in 2005, a way to recognize the service and the memory of law enforcement officers, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel killed in the line of duty. Every day, these men and women in uniform risk their lives to keep our neighborhoods safe. This coming January 24th, hundreds of Angelinos will gather and honor our local heroes and their families by running and raising funds for some of the most important local charities, including Operation Progress Los Angeles, CHP 11-9199 Foundation, Sheriff's Youth Foundation, Los Angeles Fire Department Foundation, amongst others. And a few months ago, I personally pledged to run the five-mile race along with my members of my office. And just to let everybody know here, I made sure my staff turned on the audio box in the press room, because I want to challenge my colleagues. I know some of the offices have already signed up to run for the five-mile race, but challenge my colleagues to also run with me. Ask your staff to come. We'll make it a little competition, and you have a choice. You could do the five miles, or you could do the half marathon at 13.1. I chose the five miles, thinking it was 5K, but it turned out to be five miles. And I, and my staff, myself and my staff, will be raising funds for the Los Angeles Fire Department Foundation. Now, I want to especially commend Run to Remember Los Angeles for their efforts to preserve and protect a memory of those lost in the line of duty, and to honor the many who continue to serve our neighborhoods every day. And with that said, I'd like to call Councilman Paul Coretts.
Thank you, Mr. Rue. Unfortunately, I'm not in the shape to join you for that, but I will make an effort to do it the following year. But this year, it's my honor to help unveil the first annual Run to Remember to support our families of fallen law enforcement and firefighters. Now, I wouldn't mention this if my wife, Gail, were here, but since she's not, I can embarrass her a little bit. I'll never do as much as she has done for fallen firefighters and police, because I'm not sure if any of you remember, maybe Mr. Englander may be aware of this, as recently as 20 years ago, the city had a terrible policy whereby the surviving spouse had access to the fallen firefighter or LAPD member's pension only if they did not remarry. A bizarre policy that dated from many, many decades earlier. And she became aware of this, and while she was working with Joel Wax's office, led the effort to put Proposition D on the ballot to change the charter so that our fallen heroes' spouses can actually access their pensions, which dealt with a terrible injustice. Certainly my priority as Chair of Personnel Committee to do whatever I can to help our police and firefighters and work with them, and so it's my honor to help with this. It goes through my district. Will be as helpful as we possibly can, and the following year, I will challenge you to a five-mile race or even a half marathon, but can't do it this year, but thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Coretts. You know, it could be run-walk, because I'm definitely going to be doing both, running and walking. Next, I'd like to call up newly-promoted, number-two-in-command at the Los Angeles Fire Department, and a big congratulations to him as well, Deputy Chief Castro.
Thank you very much, and on behalf of Fire Chief Tarazas and the men and women of the LAFD, we are proud participants in the inaugural Run for Remember L.A. I'm happy to announce that we have scores of LAFD members, both civilian and sworn, that have answered the fire chief's call and signed up for either the 10K or the half marathon. Those group of LAFD runners include an all-female team and the chief himself, who signed up for the half marathon. We'll be running that day in honor of our fallen brothers and sisters, and it's going to be a great event that winds through the heart of historic Hollywood and the fantastic Paramount Studios backlot, and will end at The Grove. I would like to thank the organizers, hosts, and all participants of this great event. It is always absolutely appropriate for us to reflect on those who have lost their life in the line of duty and honor the sacrifices that they've made. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next, I'd like to call up Commander Chow from our Los Angeles Police Department.
Good morning, councilmembers. On behalf of Chief Charlie Beck in Los Angeles Police Department, thank you for taking the time to recognize such an important event. As you've heard, and you'll hear from Sergeant Colley, who's kind of spearheaded this for us, this event is really recognizing the first responders, both police and fire, that have given their lives in the line of duty, those individuals that have left home, gone to roll call and not returned. I think it's always appropriate that we keep them in our memory, but it's also raising money for some very important charities. And finally, equally important, it's really showcasing probably one of the most vibrant parts of the city over on the West Side, so we're very proud to host this event. Thank you.
Thank you, Commander Chow, and of course, Commander Chow being the highest-ranking Asian American in our police department. Next, I'd like to introduce LAPD Sergeant Tim Comely to make remarks.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, and thank you very much for having me here today. It's an honor to be here. I got involved with the Run to Remember about five years ago. I traveled to Boston, and that's where it originated from, with a team of my colleagues that are here today. And I was amazed to see the support that the community and the law enforcement and the first responders got together once a year and supported the fallen first responders. In April of 2013, the Boston bombing happened during the marathon. Less than a month later, my team went to Boston to support the Run to Remember, and it was incredible to see just what an avenue that gave the community to support all the civilians that were killed, all the law enforcement, Sean Collier from MIT that was killed. And at that moment, I met Steve, and we started talking about bringing that race here to L.A. and the importance of it, and I'm honored that we were able to bring it here this year. We're really looking forward to it, and we thank you very much for all your support with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And from our partners, I'd like to introduce Lieutenant Ron Bottomley from the Sheriff's Department.
Good morning. On behalf of Sheriff McDonnell, I'm here to represent the Sheriff's Department. We are honored to be partners in this Run to Remember here in L.A. It's been a big success on the East Coast in Boston, and we hope that L.A. County will also be a big success. I know the Sheriff's Department at this point has already 400 members in the Sheriff's Department running this event in honor of our fallen officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Last but not least, to introduce the run organizer, Steve Balfour.
Thank you very much. Yes. Ken? It's a true pleasure to come here and work with this community in establishing this race. While I lived in L.A. for 20 years, I've been out in Boston for the past 10 years, but the, I've attended so many outreach opportunities where we've been marketing the event, promoting the event to the community, and talked to over 1,000 people one-on-one, and each and every one of them have spoken up to me about the tremendous appreciation they have to the city for allowing this opportunity for them to show their support to the first responder community. I'd certainly like to show a special shout-out to our host here, Councilmember Rue. Thank you so much. You also have the largest team so far running from your office, so we greatly appreciate that, and have had great support from Justin and the whole team, also from my good friend here, who I met about 30 years ago when I first lived here, Paul Coretts' office, we had great support from you as well. We thank you very much. And then also from Dan in the Hollywood office, up at Councilmember O'Farrell's office, who's really guided me through the whole process, very appreciative. The race has really come together as a result of tremendous support from the LAPD, the L.A. Fire, and the sheriffs, but we also have a total of about 60 different law enforcement, first responder departments from across the country that'll be participating in the race. The other tremendous supporters, of course, are our great sponsors, which include The Grove hosting the start and finish line, and Paramount Studio that's really opened up those iconic gates to us to have a tremendous tribute inside of Paramount Studios for the race, and to our good friends at Outfront Meteor, who have stepped right up, they were one of the first sponsors in, in providing billboard space and marketing space for the race, so we're very appreciative. As, the race starts, as we say, at Paramount Studios, and we'll be running up along Melrose and into Paramount Studios, where we'll do a special tribute to first responders. We have over 40 antique and vintage police cars, fire trucks, sheriff's cars, that will all be on display in it. The runners will be running past with lights flashing. We also have over 150 posters like this one here that commemorate or pay tribute to a person killed in the line of duty. These have been provided to us by registered runners. We solicited them to send in photos and information about this particular person here. I chose to represent us here today, Officer Ricardo Zaraga, who on race day, January 24th, would have been celebrating his 43rd birthday, and it's just amazing that his life was cut short senselessly in his contributions to the community. And so we thank his family, we thank everybody for their support and what they've done. I come from a law enforcement family myself, and we just want to thank the city for the tremendous support and look forward to really representing the city well and giving the city the opportunities to say thank you to our first responders.
Thank you. Before I present the proclamation, again, you know, this is going to be a great run. This is the inaugural run. It's going to go through several districts. It's going to start at The Grove. Paramount has opened up their gates. We're going to run through Paramount, go up to Hollywood. This is going to be a magnificent, beautiful run. So again, I challenge my colleagues, and if you don't think you can get a team together, and if anybody wants to run, they could for sure join my team. So let's show support for our first responders and show how much we appreciate the work that they do. And with that said, on behalf of Councilmember Coretts, myself, and the L.A. County City Council, I'd like to present this to Steve.
And we do have Councilmember O'Farrell on the queue as well, so we'll go ahead, go ahead, do that for the photo, and then if we can get Councilmember O'Farrell to say a few words as well.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much for organizing this and bringing it for the inaugural event here in Los Angeles. I'm very excited. I will be there as well. I'm not in very good running shape at the moment, but I'll consider running. And thank you for acknowledging Dan from my office, my Hollywood deputy, who did lots and lots of work to help organize this. The race is largely going through the 13th District and all through Paramount, which is in the 13th, and the turnaround is Barnesdale Art Park. So we're really happy that you've selected the route that you did. I think it's going to be a wonderful route and a wonderful race, and it's a reminder, especially with seeing Officer Zaraga's face, that not every moment do we realize that first responders, every single time they suit up, they have a significant element of risk by just going to work. There are very few occupations that have that level of dedication and that level of love for service, and so I will be there physically and in spirit in all ways to help support wonderful endeavors and organizations like Run to Remember. Again, thank you for coming to Los Angeles, and thank you for having this event in the three council districts here. We wholeheartedly support everything you do, and the men and women in uniform. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I just wanted to add, I really, truly appreciate that you guys are doing this and all the sponsors that came together to make this happen year after year, and, you know, Rick Caruso and Janet and Steve have been phenomenal in this, Janet Crown and Steve Robinson, dear friends of mine as well, and David Rue, I really appreciate you bringing all of them forward, and Paul, to your wife, I mean, she has been just carrying that piece of legislation to make a difference in the widows and orphans and who have lost family members, to be able to get that pension. She has truly been... She has truly been the night and shining gale, if you will, for law enforcement, but to the Run to Remember, to all of you that make this possible each and every year, thank you so much for all your dedication. I know if we can just get the information one more time, because I don't think the time was mentioned. The gates open at midnight the night before, right, for setup, and then, but you've got to be there by 5:00 AM, is that correct? And then 6:00?
No, so our packet pickup registration is on Saturday at the Biltmore Hotel, another sponsor. We're also having a free kids fun run in Persson Square on Saturday, January 23rd.
A free kids fun run?
Free kids fun run. They have free T-shirts, free police badge, everything, so we encourage all your constituents to bring their younger, these are younger children, from toddlers up to preteens. And then the race itself starts at 7:00 AM from The Grove, and we're looking forward to a great experience. We have over 4,000 people registered so far, and the numbers keep on climbing, so the city's really coming out to show their support for all.
Fantastic. Excellent.
And what I'll do is I'll make sure my office sends out information to all your offices one more time.
Wonderful, yeah. Thank you so much. Thank you all. Let's give them all a big round of applause. Thank you so much. The Run to Remember. All right, with that, we'll go ahead and turn our attentions back over to the agenda. I believe we have reconsideration from Councilmember Curran Price, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to reconsider item 34 from Wednesday's council meeting, please.
Okay, for your reconsideration, and Councilmember Joe Bustagno has a second on that, so we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration.
And, Mr. President, an amending motion, 34A, has been distributed on that item.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And then that was a continued till when?
No.
Oh, you want to take it now? Okay, so we'll go ahead and do that. We've got that's been circulated, so we'll take that up now? We're good? Okay, we'll go ahead and take that item up now. Seeing no speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Thank you very much.
As amended.
Okay, so we have two items under number one. We'll go ahead and take number one. First, two items that are going to be continued for two weeks until January 29th, and that's Leslie Morris and Cal Ahmed. So I don't know if you still wanted to speak. We're going to continue them. You have, certainly you could speak if you'd like, but we're going to continue both of those for two weeks. Did either one of you wish to speak? We're good? Okay. Excellent, thank you very much, and then of course...
And, Mr. President, there's one additional request to continue for two weeks, and that is 1P.
1P, okay, we'll go ahead and consider that for, we'll continue that until January 29th as well, 1P. And then left, of course, are Eric Previn and John Walsh on item one. Eric, is he still here? Of course.
Okay, it's Eric Previn from CD2. Oh, yep, still Englander. Of course, of course.
Stick to the item, and this is going to be your fair and final warning on that. You know the rules, so if you don't stick to the item, your time will be forfeit.
Please restore the nine seconds. Thank you. Item, this is item number one, sir, which is the annual seasonal daily lean item, and I looked at two, I was looking closely, and as is always seems to be the case, it seems like more than $2,000 of the ones in my district of the 3,000-plus penalty, I mean, fee that is owed is a onerous 50% kind of penalty, and when I looked into like, you know, so what's the egregious violation here? Believe it or not, and these are not people who have a lot of funds in the pocket necessarily, it is a vegetation overgrowth, so if you can believe it. Now, I do agree that we have to get people to cut their vegetation down, and if they don't do it, I would recommend that we send a crew out, do it for them, and send them a bill, and maybe that's what this is supposed to be, but that's not what this is, actually. This is the one where they actually did it after being noticed, they paid the smaller fee, and then circle back around, here comes Charles, have a seat up front, and let's get him for more, and they keep coming down week after week after week, and it is insulting, and it's insulting that this is what we put on our agenda on a regular basis, and it's insulting that I have to continue to repeat it in miniature. What I would recommend is moving it to a different section of our public meeting. Move it to another pub, don't do it in the hallowed John Ferraro Hall. It's disrespectful of Mr. Ferraro and all of his predecessors and the folks who have followed, who are among themselves fairly stately in their own right, and I was very moved today during the presentation, there are presentations that are deeply moving, and we should do that, continue to do that, but we should separate out so that there's also a possibility for ordinary grieving, if you will, about liens and other things, but other more important things, like the issues that we're all facing in our communities on a regular, semi-regular, and daily basis like in Studio City where I'm from, but you got a lot of people come down here and then they get turned around and sent out sideways. So I would appreciate that as we move forward. Thank you, Mr. Englander.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org or JWalshConfidential.wordpress.com, tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Again, when you do a good job, I give you praise. These liens are important, however, I want to say to everybody out there, if you show up and protest the lien as unjust, they will give a two-week extension, and then they will make a deal that you'll be happy with, because if you watch this show here, nobody comes back after two weeks and complains that they were hoodwinked. So in other words, I'm speaking in favor of the landlords who have been punished with liens, and I'm speaking in favor of the city council. Remember, I am your biggest supporter when you do the right thing, and I am your most vicious detractor when you do the wrong thing.
All right, seeing no other cards on item number one, and no speakers on the queue, we'll go ahead and open the roll on item number one. Close the roll on item number one and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Great, thank you very much, and where does that take us? All right, we're going to go ahead and go over to general public comment now, if we can have Tony Butler, followed by William Morrison, William Rodriguez Morrison.
Good morning, Mr. President, City Council, all glory to God. I got a request, and I got a planned pitch proposal for some jobs here in the city. First of all, let me say, I have some locations, excuse me, I have some locations that I wrote down for the homeless. These locations that I have listed, they're like, they're buildings, they're abandoned buildings, and they're boarded up, and they really need to be renovated and to help the homeless situation. The first location that I have, I have the 809 Fifth, that's a Panama building, it's on Fifth Street, and the second location I have, that 403 East Fifth, East Fifth Street, that's the Zoo Course Building, and the third place I have, is that 605 Broadway on the Ganani Place.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Your time is up, sir. Thank you. Next speaker is William Rodriguez Morrison.
How many minutes do I have?
Two minutes.
Two minutes.
I'm sorry, one minute for general public comment.
All right, so then I'm going to make this quick. All right, I'm going to just get directly to the point. There are a lot of city ordinances that are not being enforced, which you have car sales, liquor license, as well as fireworks. June 28th, 2011, the LA Times wrote, which I have every single city here, the city of LA bans all fireworks. A property that I own, that was 88 years old for three decades of generations of my family in Lincoln Heights, was burned down due to a skyrocket. The city is liable for all these effects that you do if you're not enforcing the law. If we were in a different community, it'd be a lot different that you wouldn't enforce, but since it's a blight community, and some of you council members that are not listening, like in my district, today is the day that you need to start enforcing these laws and start ruling by those laws. And you have a Happy New Year's, and remember, the door is right behind us if you can't do your job.
Thank you, Brian, followed by Michael, followed by Eric, followed by John.
All right. In your offices, I will turn in a leaflet entitled "The Immediate Grave Danger of Genocide." Obviously, I don't give a shit about the market collapsing, it could go to hell. What I am asking the council members to do and consider heavily on, which was actually initiated by a UCLA event where several congress persons were at this event for the Manelina, whatever, Millennials. The Tulsi Gabbard responded to a Glass-Steagall Act initiative, an immediate action now. In other words, if we do not get together and pass the Glass-Steagall law, you're going to have a problem which is far worse than what any president of the United States has ever dealt with. We need Glass-Steagall, and we have to push it now.
Yes, my name is Michael Correon, and yeah, the other day I was here, Mr. Weesar's assistant came up to me, said that they had started construction on the Solo Slope. It's so funny that this all comes right back to you. This is why you're in the hole you're in, because your employee doesn't know the difference between a cleanup and construction.
Please address the entire body, not individuals.
Okay, then, City Council, this is the reason why Mr. Weesar's in the hole he's in, because I'm talking to the City Council, so shut up. Now, because he was there, because of his incompetence and his staff doesn't know the difference...
Again, you're not addressing the body on this, so address the body on this, please. Thank you.
I am. Jesus Christ, get off your computer and listen to what I'm saying.
Excuse me.
I said to the City Council.
Yeah, that doesn't, just by saying that in advance doesn't say you're speaking to the council.
Whoa, what school did you go to, the Diddy Idiot School? So where were we? Your staff is stupid, period. Thank you, just like you.
All right, now you're disrupting the meeting, sir. You're still disrupting the meeting. All right, sir, one more outburst, you'll be asked to leave. Okay, thank you very much. Can you please leave now? You're disrupting the meeting, I've warned you three times now.
Racist, racist.
Please go ahead, have a good day, have a nice weekend. Thank you. Thank you. You're still disrupting the meeting. All right, if we could just please make a record and note that Michael is still disrupting this meeting.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. Michael Hunt was arrested downstairs. There's a picture of his being arrested in his Klan outfit. He's a black man. You can see it at Hollywood Dems at our tweet. The Baldwin Hills Mall, the Walmart, is closing forever on Sunday, January 17th. Have you heard anything from these scumbags up here, especially the Uncle Tom scumbags? This is going to be a disaster for the black community, and the black community leaders don't give a goddamn fucking shit as long as they get their money. They never do that in a white neighborhood. I want you to know that.
Okay, you know what? Mr. Walsh, Mr. Walsh, if you're going to yell at this chambers, no, that's disruptive. That's not just public comment. You'll be asked to leave.
I'm loud, you racist scumbag.
Okay, goodbye, thank you. Eric, you get to follow that?
Right, it is Eric Previn from CD2, and in the public comment, what can I say here that would be not something that's a little bit repetitive? Well, I think this is a good one. You know, there's a feeling in some of the institutions that we revere that people can see something's a little bit wrong, but then they look away quickly. Could you see my face there, sir? And then what happens is they start to feel bad about it, because it's kind of a yucky feeling, because they saw something that wasn't right, and then they don't feel good about that, and we've seen that in Penn State to take it away from this building, which is a much more serious level. We saw it at the church in Boston. Anybody who has not seen Spotlight ought to look at how powerful a small op-ed can be when then a newspaper and other interested parties start to pay attention to a little problem. Obviously, thank God, we're not facing those kinds of problems here at City Hall, but in the Open Government Transparency Department, as Mr. O'Connell will attest before being frogmarched out, we need to do a little better, and that is why I bring to your attention the opportunity to do that.
Great, thank you very much. So that concludes the general public comment, and seeing no other cards, I believe we have motions for posting and referral.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I believe there is a request to reconsider 1I.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and open the roll for reconsideration of 1I, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And the request is to continue it for two weeks, is that correct? Okay, until January 29th, that'll be the order without objection. Thank you very much. And then with that, we'll go ahead and post and refer the matters, and that'll conclude the agenda, and do we have any announcements, colleagues? Seeing none, do we have any adjourning motions? We do, and so if we can get everybody in council chambers to please rise for adjourning Mr. Weesar, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President, and colleagues, I ask that we adjourn in memory of Don Pedro Rosado. He is the owner of El Mercado de Los Angeles located in Bow Heights. El Mercado was started in the 1960s as a way to promote Mexican culture here in Los Angeles, and it soon became a meeting place and an area where people could go and remember their home country, do shopping, and eat, and listen to mariachis, and pick up some of the products that you could get from Mexico. And it's interesting how this person's life evolved around El Mercado and starting there as a janitor and to become the owner and eventually save this great marketplace, to not only save this marketplace, but also to be a great community contributor. There was not an organization in the area who would come to Mr. Rosado, who would ask for assistance that walked away empty-handed. He was very unselfish and gave a lot to the community. He was born in Merida, Yucatan, on March 9th, 1936, and arrived to the United States in the 1960s. He returned back home one and a half years later, married his childhood crush, Mercedes Rosado, on March 9th, and came back to the United States to work and raise a family. As I mentioned, he came to the United States in the 60s and first worked at the Herald Examiner. One of his good friends, also from Yucatan, owned a small bookstore at El Mercado, and Don Pedro went to work there and then subleased the bookstore from him. When his friend decided to move back to Yucatan in 1972, Don Pedro purchased a small bookstore from him, and at the time, he was only one of a few tenants at El Mercado. He became involved in the community and soon joined the Association of Tenants of El Mercado, who organized to improve the conditions. Over the years, he worked his way up until he became the general manager and eventually the owner. He was a risk-taker. Upon becoming the owner of the largest businesses in Bow Heights, he made upgrades to both its exterior and interior and expanded the size. People, not just from Bow Heights, but throughout Los Angeles, come to El Mercado to buy some of their favorite Mexican dishes, candy, snacks, traditional attire, and most importantly, to remember and celebrate the great memories from their native Mexico as well as new ones. In addition to his successful, his success as a businessman, he was extremely kind-hearted and generous to the community. He supported almost every community organization, and he was also involved with the Community Police Advisory Board, the Bow Heights Technology Center, and was a supporter of many senior organizations. Our deepest condolences to his wife Mercedes and his three children, Mercedes, Pedro Antonio, Marlene, and the family he left behind at El Mercado and the greater community of Bow Heights. May he rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. President.
Great, oh, thank you very much. Seeing no other adjourning motions, that concludes this council agenda, and we are adjourned. Thank you, have a safe weekend.